Okay. Good evening. This is August 19th, 2020. Open meeting for the Newbury Planning Board is being conducted remotely, consistent with Governor Baker's executive order of March 12th, 2020, due to the current state of emergency in the Commonwealth due to outbreak of COVID-19 virus. In order to mitigate the transmission of COVID-19 virus, we have been advised and directed by the Commonwealth to suspend public gatherings. And as such, the governor's order supersedes the requirements of the public meeting law to have all meetings in a publicly accessible physical location. Further, all members of public bodies are allowed and encouraged to participate remotely. The order, which you can find posted with agenda materials for this meeting, allows public bodies to meet entirely royally so long as reasonably public asset access is afforded so that public can follow along the deliberations of the meeting. For this meeting, the Newbury Planning Board is convening by video conference via Zoom as posted on the Planning Board's agenda, which can be found on the Planning Board section of the town's website, and which identifies how the public may join. May join us by going to zoom.us and enter meeting ID 832-7141-3056. That's 832-7141-3056, or by calling 929-205-6099. That number again is 929-205-6099. And enter the ID number that we just mentioned. For our Zoom meetings, please be aware that this is being recorded and that attendees are participating by either video or telephone conference. Meeting materials will provide it to the board members prior to meeting for review. Applicants or their representatives may be called upon to speak and if needed, share information to the screen. Please state the intention after you have been called. Before we turn to the first item on our agenda, permit me to cover some ground rules for an effective and clear conduct of business and to ensure accurate meeting minutes. I, as the chair, will introduce each speaker on the agenda. After speakers conclude their remarks, I will go down the list of members inviting each member on the board to provide any common question or motions. Please hold your name until I call off you. For attendees, except board members and staff, please remember to mute your phone, which is star six to toggle mute and unmute. On your computer, it's the mute button when you're not speaking. Please use earbuds or earphones if you're using a tablet or cell phone. Please remember to speak clearly and in a way that helps generate accurate minutes. I will try to keep that in mind. Please be aware that video participants can see you and that you should take care not to screen share your computer. Anything that you broadcast may be captured by this recording. For any responses, please wait until I yield the floor to you and state your name before speaking. If board members wish to engage in discussions with other members, please do so through the chair. I will just take care to identify when you're speaking. With three guns to public comment, there will be an opportunity for public comment and questions during our public hearings. After board members have spoken, I will afford the public an opportunity to comment and/or ask questions in the following manner. I will see questions and comments through the raise hand function for video participants. This function can be accessed by clicking on the participants option listed in the menu below the photo gallery. You will click on this and the window will open and display to the right. On the bottom of the participants area, you will see a list of phone, video participants, and on the bottom, you will see the ability to click a button that says raise hand. Please ensure your name is displayed. You can reuse rename yourself using the more functions next to your name. List your name and address when you and then your question. For telephone participants, you can use your telephone keypad while in a Zoom meeting by raising hand using star nine. I will then allow questions and comments from the public that have hit the raise hand button. In order, they will be recorded in the order which they are listed. Our system will do that automatically. Each participant will be called on to provide his or her name, address, and then ask the question or make a comment. I will afford the applicant's participant or his representative, his or her representative, an opportunity to reply. Your hand will be lowered when you have been given the floor for your questions. The board will continue down the list of those raise hand columns and again afford participation with the applicant representative and not to speak. Should there be a physical electronic submitted submission of questions or concerns, they will be written at the record. And again, the participants, applicants, representatives will be afforded the opportunity to speak if the issues have been raised. We should note that each vote will be taken by way of a roll. So just for clarity sake, we're going to start at 7:15, which would be in a couple of minutes. I just want everyone to understand that we have three public hearing tonight and we want to try to be as fair to all of the applicants and for questions to be done in an orderly manner. We also want to be fair to be timely. So we're going to try to limit each of our sessions, our hearings to 30 minutes. Again, out of courtesy to the applicants and members of our public. And again, to use your cell phones, I'll try to remember to let you know to use the star nine function on your phone to mute and unmute yourselves. Okay, that takes care of our opening remarks. Martha, do we have anything else to say before we kick off?
No, I think, I think that's it. We're actually, public hearings are scheduled to start in two minutes.
Okay, so for two minutes, what would you like to talk about? Would you like to bring us up to anything going on with the town financial report abbreviated?
Yeah, I could do that. Basically, I just wanted to give the board a heads up on some additional applications that are coming down the pike. We have, I've received for review one approval not required plan for property at two, it's 243 High Road, which we're reviewing now. Emily's been working on that today. We've got a site plan review application for the parcel that actually was carved off from the Newbury Self-Storage Parcel with frontage on Boston Road. So that is going through preliminary review now and and also the subdivision plan for the Kinter, the one lot subdivision at the end of Shandell Drive. We did an A and R on that recently. So we have now the subdivision application for. So I'm anticipating that those will all be submitted at the September 2nd meeting.
Okay, very good, very good. All right. Anybody have any questions for Martha regarding any of those new items coming down the pike? Very good. Well, I'm patiently waiting on the clock. Click from 714 to 715. You can probably do a countdown, but I don't think you want to.
One, five.
Oh. I was gonna say, you don't want to hear me sing. Thank you, Leslie. We saved the day. Okay. I'd like to start our public hearings. Our first public hearing is going to be a continued public hearing. It's a open space residential development, OSRD special permit application 105 High Road MAP R48, Lot 9, owner, author, and Sandra Costanzas. Applicant is DePiro LLC. This is continued from July 15th of 2020. Would like to start off tonight?
I would, please.
Hey Jill, do you want to identify yourself?
Yes. Good evening, Jill Mann, legal counsel for DePiro Properties. I have been hired to support Mark Griffin and to evaluate the existing set of plans and documents that were delivered in in application for the open space residential subdivision at 105 High Road. Basically, I just wanted to introduce that new yield plan. What my, what I was tasked to do was to review the submittals to evaluate whether or not projects were in fact, or the lot wasn't, the lots were in fact, all by right and that the particular request was by right. Based on that request, I also was asked to evaluate the economic viability of the subdivision. The plan that I had seen that was used as a yield plan was not truly a viable conventional subdivision plan. This particular plan is a viable subdivision plan and is in fact by right. So that was something that I undertook and that's why we have actually resubmitted the conventional plan. This particular plan, just to briefly go over it, actually does show six two-family lots. Each of the lots complies with the zoning requirements and that they do provide for the requisite amount of frontage, which is 125 feet. They have the 60,000 square foot of area and they have the 80% of contiguous upland with regard to each lot. This also demonstrates a subdivision roadway that is waiver free. I did read that letter from Town Council from Lisa Mead. I know Brian Winter is on the line who is also from Talerman. Need. What we basically did was we took Lisa's letter and we basically just went through and created a buy right plan. This particular roadway doesn't require any waivers. It shows all the burdens to the property. It shows that 14, well, seven-foot easement on Mr. Costanzas' land that is actually able to be used by the abutting landowner. It shows the entrance point. It demonstrates sufficient radii. There's absolutely nothing about the plan that would require a waiver. The street is not in excess of the requirement for a cul-de-sac. And again, all the lots are compliant. The one thing I did notice when I was reviewing the letter from Town Council, which kind of gave me a little bit of pause, was how in fact it was suggested that the board interpret the open space. I, in order to really understand it, I asked Steve Sawyer to plot it and show me what the open space requirement would be because what we were told was, look, you need to give us a buy right yield plan. Yep, okay. And you need to show us open space and an open space residential subdivision that meets with all of the requirements and doesn't require any waivers from the planning board. Because as you well know, you're entitled to waive certain of those requirements under the planning board's authority with regard to the bylaw provisions of the OSRD. So believe it or not, this is the only way you can create open space that would meet the requirements of what was suggested to us in the letter by Town Council. Essentially, it says, look, 50% of the upland has to be contiguous that is included in the open space, which basically means you have to work in reverse. You have to figure out what your amount of contiguous upland is and then provide for the open space. So we knew we had one large lot, if you can see it. Steve, I don't know if you can circle it. The one large area of upland was 210797. So we knew that the largest amount of open space we could provide to this board or to the town would have been something that was double that, no more, because then we would not be complying with the OSRD requirement. And that results in that configuration of development area and that configuration for upland. And what we are required to do is actually take some more development land. And that's why you see that pink outline. Believe it or not, that is actually part of the development land because we needed to take more wetlands so that we could reduce the total amount of open space. I just, I point this out merely because if the board truly wants us to go forward with the OSRD, we do need direction relative to this definition because I don't think this is really what you mean it to require or to have a result such as this. Thanks, Steve. Hey, you know what, Steve? Could you do me a favor? Can you show them the OSRD plan that we proposed that shows, you know, basically 13 units because we have 12 in the yield and then the bonus? Okay, here we go. So basically, if we were to even go forward with the OSRD plan because the board desires that approach, what you see are, we're requesting the additional one lot. And in this particular configuration, we actually require a waiver from your open space subdivision to give you more, to give you more open space. The other plan I showed you provides about 58%. This particular plan provides in excess of that, more than 65% is provided in this particular breakdown again. But the 50% contiguous upland, it isn't because we can't give you that much land then. I guess I just want to point out a couple of things. The reason why we're seeking the bonus lot is because if you look at the OSRD, you can see that the length of the roadway in the OSRD, let's just call it approximately 1,000 feet in length. The plan under the conventional, if you will, buy right subdivision is, is under 500 feet. So the, the development costs are actually far less with a conventional plan than it is the OSRD because the OSRD requires a longer roadway, if you will, to access all of the lots. And we recognize that. But because the roadway is a bit longer, we would look for another, the bonus lot to compensate for that additional burden. With regard to either one of those development options, we would have the ability to put in a single septic plan. We can do that and just have the subdivision plan be a condominium in, under this particular, under this particular development option, it would absolutely be a single, a single septic system. Isn't that correct, Steve?
Yes, it would have to be a common shared system.
And then you see all the individual lots. So basically, what I wanted to do was just kind of go through that conventional plan and just discuss what our, what our next steps are with the board, obviously, after you ask us any questions you have. Because I did submit that letter to, through Ms. Taylor. And that letter was just basically trying to get some control on what the next steps were going to be, which is why I actually asked the board if they would go through the letter, go through those requests and give us feedback on them. Because the concern by, by the applicant is it's uncertain if the board wants to do, to actually engage in further discussions about the open space residential subdivision. Because there's been, you know, not that much feedback from the board members relative to that particular plan. So we would love to be able to hear from you how you feel, you know, what, what is the board's true direction? Is the true direction to go conventional? Is the true direction to go open space? At that point, I think it's almost better. I know the board has probably heard more about this property than it cares to. By the way, it's 16 acres cut total. So maybe it'd be a great time for the board members to ask questions. I think I leave it at that for this, at this time and ask.
Thank you.
Yep.
Actually, there was one item that, one graphic that wasn't presented at the last meeting, I think, would be helpful just to give an idea Can you hear me?
Yep.
Okay, the, the difference between the OSRD and a conventional. Can, can everyone see this graphic here?
Oh, yes.
Yeah. So this, this was with the previous, the, the previous plan before we added the lots. But the roadway itself is identical. There's no difference in the length of roadway. So you can see that with the OSRD, everything's kind of tucked behind these large riding rings. A lot of these large structures, granted, there'd be one more. Let me see my, see my cursor. There'd be one more house right here. So it's important to note that this entire area is undisturbed. And now with the, when you look at it with the with the conventional, we would be, we'd be pushing back, you know, there'd be houses in this area here. There'd be two homes here. And also, there'd be two homes, or actually two duplexes in this area here, two duplexes in this area here. So you can see that this conventional definitely provides, it's much greater impact. All of this back wooded area is no longer available to the town or to the public for, for walking and such. So I just wanted to be clear. There seemed to be some confusion. Somebody, I think there was some comments that it seemed as if the conventional plan was less impact than the OSID. Well, yes, the road might be shorter, which actually would save some money. However, we're giving up a tremendous amount of upland open space and wetland area here. There would be a crossing here to get to that land, but we're under 4,000 square feet. So that can easily be attained through conservation. So I just, I don't think this plan was ever presented. So when you look at, here's River View, here's Longview. So when you, if everyone kind of knows Longview. So if we were to go conventional, we'd have a shorter subdivision with just structures all staggered back through big structures and big lots staggered out through the rear area. So just think of it, Longview on steroids would probably be three times or three to four times the amount of development from Longview to this, but a similar style with the shorter cul-de-sac, but with just using all of our available area, upland area for development. I just wanted, I don't think that was clearly presented. I just wanted to make sure everyone can clearly see that, that the difference between the two. I'm gonna, I'm gonna turn it back to Jill.
Sure. No, no worries. No, there you go. You're just going back to, so that's, that, this is just again, a picture of the conventional plan. And I do think it's important and I would, I defer to the chair. But I think it's probably appropriate for the board to ask any questions that it may have.
Thanks for your presentation. And I think we can probably stop the screen share for a couple of minutes. Okay. Let's see how to do that. Stop share. There we go. Okay, Martha, I want to first start off with you and I have a question to you. So this is a new plan, a new conventional plan. Is that right? This is a new, a new submission?
It's a new conventional plan and a new OSRD plan, both showing more units than what was originally presented to the board.
How does that fall under the current, current hearing? Because this is, help me through the, where I'm going with this.
Might turn it or two.
Brian, Brian, are you here somewhere? Yeah, yeah. Help me out here because this is something new. This is a different plan than what we started with. And does this need to be renoticed?
George, Mr. Chairman, again, for the record and for the people virtually attending at home, Brian Winner from Town Council's office, me, Talman Acosta. My understanding of the original notice of public hearing that was published and advertised was that it was for 10 plus one units, so a total of 11 units. So that was sort of the maximum and that the public notice contained. So now what I, I think I'm seeing is, is 12 plus one, so a potential of 13. So it's the two plans that are now submitted before the board exceed on the higher end, what was advertised. So taking that as true, because I don't have the advertisement in front of me, but that's how I'm informed it reads. There are a couple of options for the board. If you want me to get into sort of what those choices are and, and what a potential recommendation might look like, I'm happy to do so. But it is an issue that I think the board should deal with because we would have written the notice of public hearing differently were this applied for originally.
So then help me, because I want to make sure that we follow what should be done appropriately.
And I do have a note, so if it's, if anybody wants me to put it up on the screen. But it was for 10, 10 plus one.
Okay, so I recited that correctly?
Okay.
Okay. So there are two options. One, you can, in any event, you can continue with the public hearing. And it's up to the board how you want to proceed next. So some boards would ask the applicant if they want to proceed at risk because it certainly raises an issue. It's an issue that places the applicant at risk probably more so than the board, or at least equally so is the board. Because if the board were to grant an approval and someone were to challenge it, they might point to a defect in the notice of public hearing and the board's vote being outside the scope of that. So you could continue on and ask the applicant if they want to proceed at risk. The other option is to simply renotice it. You know, you hold the, you know, continued public hearing this evening as you are, taking the information, but don't take any action on any of the matters before the board, unless and until a new public hearing notice has been advertised and posted in accordance with the statute. So that can be done in parallel. It doesn't mean anyone has to lose any time. But the reason why you might do that is twofold. One, you know, the public deserves to be notified. That's the point of doing it in the first place. So the public deserves to notice that there's a new and arguably more intense proposal before the board. And there may have been some people who didn't attend the prior hearings, for whatever reason, that may choose to attend the hearings now if they're on notice that the, the scope of the project has been enlarged by the amount that it has. And the other factor is, you know, it's the integrity of the board's public process. So many boards, of course, are rightfully concerned that where the project is, is sort of visible as this one that's gotten the public attention, you want to make sure you're getting all the, the proper input from the public and that interested parties in fact have participated, had a chance to participate and that the board has heard from them. So some boards do consider that to be very critical and important and therefore ask the applicant to pay for and provide a new public notice for the new scope of what's been put in front of the board now. So those are the, the two options.
Well, they can run concurrently. It would just require a renoticing.
Right, which can happen and because it's, it's not, you know, a very long notice period. So by the time the board meets again, I imagine that would have been accomplished.
I want to turn to my vice chair, Larry. Your thoughts on this? Larry, I think you muted. I'll mute you. Yep, that's perfect.
Yeah, I mean, personally, I think the prudent thing to do is to renotice it.
I just want to do a quick poll. I just want to do a quick poll of, of the board. So that's my vice chair. George, your thoughts?
Yes, renotice it.
Leslie, your thoughts?
Yeah, I think there's, there's been a change. The three notices would be the most appropriate thing to do.
Woody, your, your feelings?
The same.
Okay, so I think the feeling of the board, Brian, so just so we can make sure that there's no exposure, that we request that be done. So how can we have this flow concurrently as to what's going on right now? Help me with that, that process.
So you can continue tonight's meeting. I mean, continue holding it. You can hear from the applicant under the, the current scope of what's before you. That's fine. But I would recommend that you not take any action on the proposal. So don't vote on, on the proposal that's been now submitted. So the, the new version of it with a new scope until that notice has been completed and the cycle has been completed, you know, two weeks publication, et cetera. So that can happen, you know, as early as it can happen. I mean, it could begin the process tomorrow so that it's all in place for your next, your next evening. So I would ask the applicant, if that's the will of the board, to provide the information and, and provide the funds so that we can get that accomplished as soon as possible so that no one loses any time, neither the applicant nor the board or the public. And it can be teed up properly and then the board can proceed on the new submissions at the next public hearing. And just to be clear, what I'm suggesting the board doesn't have to do is ask for a new application, new filing fee and any of those sort of niceties that would otherwise come along with sort of a, a fully amended application. I think you can still do it within the scope. So I don't think there, we need to even go in that direction of a new filing for your new application, just a new notice.
Okay, great. Thank you, Brian. Jill, I think you've heard kind of the direction. We want to keep this thing in motion. But we just want to make sure that the, the things that need to be done are done so that if there is a challenge that the board is operating within its scope as council has brought to our attention. So with that said, board members, this is a, a new, a new plan that's being submitted. So I'm going to ask that you kind of review it, think about it. And I'd like to see if anyone has any specific questions as to where we're at right now. Larry, do you have any questions?
I don't think so at this point.
Okay, thank you. George, do you have any questions?
No.
Okay. Leslie, do you have any questions?
Not at this time.
Okay, great. Woody, do you have any questions?
No, I do not.
Okay, we have, looks like about 10 minutes left for our designation on this time. Martha, do we have any questions from the public or the voters?
Well, we do have, we've received some new communications.
Okay, would you want to kind of summarize those? So, because I know that we had, we had a matrix before that we were, we were working.
Right, so I'm going to try to share that with you all. If you can bear with me for a second. So can you, can you see that?
We can. Can you make it larger?
I can try.
Okay. So one thing about screen sharing, it doesn't appear large on everyone else's screens. It's getting better and better.
Oh, I can see that.
Is that enough?
Could you go one more?
That's good.
I will still lean in a little bit. So excuse me leaning in.
That's fine. Unfortunately, if I make it, it's going to go off my screen.
Yep, no, that's good. Okay, it's, it's all you, Martha. Go ahead.
Right, okay. So received an email actually right after the last public hearing from Elizabeth de Grignier. Basically, on 71620. She lives at 1620th Street. She's a resident. So you see that under. So you see that under general comments. Her comment was more to do with affordable housing. We received an email from Peter Gonchev yesterday, August 18th. He lives at 117 High Road. And today Jill had actually received some communications which she forwarded to me this afternoon. So these are all received today. One from Julie Price at 100 High Road. Jonathan, 169 High Road, Phil and Alana Dunn at 109 High Road. Phil had submitted a letter previously. Also, this basically is the same information and Nancy Roy at Two Littles Lane. So I will add all of these to the ones that have been posted on the website already.
And so these are available for review to the public on the website.
Yeah, they will be as of tomorrow.
And sure, if I may, Chief President Picos, I just, I have been asking, I there are a couple of letters in opposition that are inflammatory, not valid, not done by people who are at all able to be verified. And I would ask that those be removed. I read them and they're inappropriate to be part of a public record and they're not by any, as far as I can tell, legally existing person.
Thank you for your comment. Are there any public comments that any raised hands that you see, Martha?
I am not seeing any at the moment. Just want to ask if the, oh, here's one.
Yep.
So that is Peter Gonchev raised his hand.
Okay.
Yeah, can you hear me?
We can, Peter. Go ahead.
Yeah, I had a quick question. How did the number of lots get determined out of the whole plan? I guess I don't understand how they came to 10 lots or 11 lots. And so I just had that basic question.
Okay, Jill, would you like to address that?
Well, certainly. Thank you. Mr. Gonchev, the way in which it's done is you evaluate the property and then you determine and design what they consider to be a by right use. What that means is you look at subdivision rules and regulations and you show how how long a roadway can be. You show each of the individual lots and then you back into the number of of properties that are legally available. So it's a process that is just set and based on the existing regulations, rules and ordinances of the town.
Thank you.
You're very welcome.
And we have one from, looks like Mick Crouch.
Yep, hi. I'm just looking to be added to the against opposition list at 127 High Road.
Mitch, do you want to submit an email or a letter?
Sure.
Okay, that'd be great. You can just send it to Martha at Town Planner, and that would that way you can put them to the record. Thank you very much.
Do we have a does that is that somewhere in the chat that I can see an email address?
It's planningboard@townofnewberry.org.
Thank you.
Welcome.
All right, Michelle. Michelle, would you like to identify yourself, please? Let me unmute you. Yes, that would make it easier, wouldn't it? And you might need to unmute yourself.
Yep, okay. Hi, thank you. Michelle O'Gerry, 30 Cottage Road. I actually just have a question. Which is when somebody submits a development plan that makes it to a public hearing and then they submit a plan that substantially changed that the plan that was originally submitted that's made it to the public hearing. At what point does it trigger having to file an application fee and go through the beginnings of what how significantly different does the plan have to be where it triggers, yes, now we need you to refile?
So Michelle, I can probably try to answer that. We're trying to do this concurrently. So we've asked the applicant to do a refiling just so that 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 process can be in place. And as that's going on, our public hearing, which will be continued, will continue on. So by the time we get to our next hearing, the refiling should have taken place. So hopefully it'll be all addressed, your concern will be addressed by our next meeting.
But I guess what I'm what I'm asking is, I understand it's you're continuing it to another hearing. But what would at what point do you say this is a different plan? You need to resubmit this.
This is a different, this is a different plan.
Right, but but what I mean is attorney winner said that it doesn't need to have a new application fee. It doesn't need to go through that that originals. It doesn't need to go back to start and start over. And I'm saying, how different would it have to be to have to start over with the process of filing it?
Brian, I'm going to defer to you because maybe you can help answer that question.
Yeah, I mean, it's it's difficult to answer that in the abstract. But typically, when you have an application before a board and they've already filed, you know, the the application forms, they've submitted what we call a 53G peer review fee. And they've paid all the other related fees and it's complete and it's ongoing. Boards will often, if there's a change in the plan and it's still a residential subdivision, it's still showing a certain number of units and it's increasing the number of units. But it's not, for example, showing an industrial park or something that would change the scope of, say, peer review or any of the other kind of services we've engaged. So it's still within that scope. So often what boards will do is is ask for it to be readvertised and renoticed. So that's the really the important thing. That starts a new public hearing essentially. And that's what the public deserves and what the board deserves is a new public hearing so that it can be properly vetted. The application form and the application fee, they've already been submitted. They've been paid. So that's requiring an applicant to to resubmit those to a certain extent would be elevating kind of form over substance. We have those and we've attributed them to the review of this project and will continue to do so. So in this case, my recommendation is is based on the fact that we don't really need to reinvent that part of the process. But we, the most critical part is is informing the public and having a the integrity of the public hearing process protected. Thank you.
Thank you, Michelle. Appreciate it. Sean?
Hello.
Hi, go ahead, Sean. If you got identify yourself and your address, please.
I'm Sean Patty. I live at Five Maple Terrace in Newbury. Well, I guess my my question is, it's it sounds like this is approved in one way or another. Is there any discussion about none of this happening at all? Is that even a possibility?
So let me try to identify the process here. So as of right now, developer could develop this. Martha, correct me if I misspeak, with our current subdivision regulations. And so what they're trying to do is they're trying to evaluate whether they're going to make a typical subdevelop subdivision, or they're going to go for an OSRD, which allows a little different reconfiguration of the potential development with some open land left, which usually results in a bonus lot configuration with this other type of approach. And so the applicant first will say by right, we can do XYZ. And then they say by right, we are entitled to this. We are wanting to explore an OSRD, which would then allow us to X, Z, and then the process. So does that explain for you?
That that makes sense to me.
Okay.
I'm sure that everybody in Newbury understands that the
Okay.
individual that owns a property has the right to do a certain number of things with it regardless of permits or whatever. I'm probably one of those people, mostly because I don't understand all the legalities of this. I can tell you that I've been here for 20 years and I enjoy running on the streets of Newbury and stopping in and taking the view. My wife and I love birding and we like the open space. And even in my short time here, which is less than Christine's, I've seen the open space get smaller and smaller. One of my favorite roads is Noonan Road and all those open fields out there that still remain, I'm thankful for. But it's very upsetting to see the large structures that have been put in. That is, I think, if a lot of people, the biggest concern is the loss of that that type of area. That's that's all I really had to say. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much, Sean. Appreciate appreciate your comments. All right, is there anyone else that has a question at this point in time or would like to comment? Okay, okay, Jill, I think you have an appreciation of where we're going. And I'd like to try to keep our time as we had intended, so we can keep our our schedule here. So we're going to be continuing our public hearing. And so Martha, could you float me some dates that would
I'm just looking at the calendar because we're going to renotice this hearing. We're going to have to take that into account, assuming two two consecutive weeks. So bear with me for a second. So there's not enough time to do it for the September 2nd hearing. So I think we probably end up looking at the September 16th hearing. Because to meet the meet the requirements for September 2nd, that the notice would have had to appear today at the latest.
All right, so the date again was the 16th. Okay, great.
September.
Wonderful. So we're probably going to have a series of hearings. So we'll probably do our following one following another. And if we don't, we don't have anything right now scheduled for the 16th, correct?
Right now, no.
Okay, cool. Board members, I would entertain a motion for continuation of this public hearing to the 16th of September 7:15.
Move to continue to September 16th for 105 High Road.
Thank you, Liz. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Woody. Okay, I'm going to do a roll call. Larry, how say you? Oh, Larry, you muted. Let me unmute you. Maybe you have to unmute yourself. Larry, you'll need to unmute yourself. Larry might be frozen. Oh, there you go, Larry.
To the motion.
Was that a support of the motion, Larry?
Yes, was.
Okay, thank you very much. George, how say you?
Yes.
Thank you, George. Leslie?
Yes.
Yes, Woody?
Yes.
Okay, and the chair also yes. Thank you very much, folks. So Jill, we'll see you back on the 16th, okay?
May I ask, is there going to be the possibility of responding to some of those issues? Because it's hard for us to design the plan without knowing if we're responding properly to that open space issue?
I I don't think that I'm in a position right now to give you the answer to that question. Great, thank you. I'd like to continue our public hearings. We're going to continue with a definitive subdivision plan application for Farmview Lane, 68 Green Street, map R35 lot 21, owner applicant. 68 Green Street Realty Trust, Eva Jackman trustee, continued from August 5th, 2020. And there is a note that this will be continued at the applicant's request to September 2nd at 7:15. All right, continuing on our public hearings, a continued concurrent public hearing for Newbury Self-Storage Expansion, 131 Newbury Port Turnpike, map R36 parcels 23 and 24, owner applicant Stoway Storage, Newbury LLC. Doing business as Newbury Self-Storage, William G. Francesco, manager, continued from the 5th of August 2020. This is a site plan review application and a special permit application. Bill, how are you? Good to see you again. All righty. So where are we, Bill? Do we have anything? You go to check with insurance?
Two things. The first was whether the security cameras would work with the 4K light. And I was told they would work with the 4K light.
Perfect.
I checked with insurance and what happens is when you complete a project, the insurance company will come out and audit the project and they'll take down information on how many cameras, how many lights, you know, fire extinguishers, all of that. And then they make a determination on what your annual fee is going to be. So I don't know the answer to that.
Did they indicate that they would have a deterrent, a detrimental feeling if the lights would dial down from 5,000 to 4,000?
4,000. They were more concerned that there weren't any pole lights because they're concerned about the safety, obviously, of the tenants.
So is there a, is Bill here today?
No, Bill's not here.
Okay, okay. Because I want to get you, I want you, I want to get this thing advancing for you. They looked at the site. They looked at the photometrics that Bill produced. Did you submit that to your insurance folks, the photometrics?
No, I didn't. I don't think, I don't think they're really willing to look at it until the project's complete.
Oh, but they were, oh, but they wanted poll polls. Okay, okay. Okay. Hold on, Bill, just for a second. Martha, do you have anything or any questions or concerns or points to bring in?
Not really at this time. And I had, I had one sort of operational question as I started drafting the the decision. I I reviewed the original application materials and in that, and this might go a little bit towards use, that it was noted that the hours of operation would remain the same, i.e. 6:00 AM to 10:00 PM. So is that is that generally what?
Those are the hours of operation for this storage facility. Our office hours are 9:00 AM till 6 o'clock, Monday through Friday, and 9:00 AM to 1 o'clock on Saturday, and we're closed on Sunday.
So are the hours of operation different than when people can get access to their storages?
No, no, the the people, the from 6:00 AM till 10 o'clock every day of the year, people can access their storage unit. But the office where you physically come in and pay your bill or rent a unit, those hours are the nine to six.
Okay, okay. And the people coming in, because I was kind of under an impression from maybe a discussion, maybe I just misinterpreted that it was a 24-hour access.
You can pay for 24-hour access. I don't have anyone right now paying for that.
Okay.
And generally, the people that have used the 24-hour access are people that get deliveries in the middle of the night, like maybe the potato chip guy that go that refills the racks in the stores. The truck will deliver in the middle of the night and then take off. But I haven't had one of those tenants yet.
Okay, Martha, is that a problem with our OSR operation?
No, I mean, I think the original hours were like 6:00 to 10:00, with the understanding that it was not a 24-hour facility. So.
Okay, I see Leslie eagerly asking for a question.
I remember on our site walk that and correct me if I'm wrong on this, but there were a number of different tenants that had the ability to get in on the off hours because of their business hours. You know, so they could get in at like five or they could get, you know, they were, they were sales reps that had to load up their facilities or they were tradesmen that had to get in and work. So I might be wrong on this, but I really remember that some of the tenants were able to get in on the off hours.
Yep, we don't have any of those tents. We are 6:00 to 10:00 at night.
Okay.
And of course, the gates work 24-hour for the police and the fire department because they occasionally drive through.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Leslie. Let me just go to the board real quick. Larry, do you have any questions? There was a no. I could see him say no, even though he's muted. So for the record, George?
No, I have no questions.
Thank you. Leslie, any other questions?
No, I've asked mine. Thank you.
Beautiful. Thank you, Leslie. Woody, any questions?
No, no questions.
Okay. Are there any questions or concerns from butters or I don't see any hands up? Do you see anything, Martha?
No, I don't.
Okay, great. Okay, Martha, next steps. Where are we going? Okay, great. Okay, Martha, next steps. Where are we going?
The last time, last meeting, I was requested, asked to start drafting the decision. When we went through the criteria, it appeared that there weren't any particular concerns or any particular conditions. So I'm proceeding on that basis unless there's any, anything different this time. And it would be both a site plan review as well as the special permit decision.
All right. So we have the option of continuing this until we have our, our our decision drafted.
Yeah, I would suggest keeping it open just in case there needs to be more discussion with Bill.
Yep.
I guess the only other thing is whether, whether we wanted to talk about the possibility of getting out there to look at the existing pole lights.
Perfect, perfect, perfect. So Bill, my table draft, drafted decision, and in our next hearing, we can hopefully conclude this process with that decision and then get this to where it needs to be. With regards to Martha's question, I'm waving my hand back and forth because I'm looking at the people on my computer squares. And I'm not sure the weather, where my head is on the same as yours. So please forgive my head and fingers going back and forth. Where do we stand with possibly getting out there and taking a look at the shielding process with Bill?
Well, that's kind of, that's kind of, kind of a catch 22. I was waiting for you to tell me that you wanted me to do it before I spent the money.
So we, we do want to, you know, try to facilitate shielding that we can, especially with those troubled areas. So let us know when a good time would be. Or what I might suggest is being such with Martha. And Martha, if you could just let the board members know, float maybe an email a couple of times that would work, that we could maybe get out there. And how much time do you think Bill would need, Bill?
Well, what I would suggest is let us shield the one right, the one pole light right by Route 1 first.
Okay.
And have you out to take a look at it. And then if it, if it looks like it's acceptable, then we'll go ahead and, you know, do the rest of them.
Okay, okay. So why don't you do that and let us know when it's done and then we can do the next steps. I think that's a great idea, Bill.
Okay.
Wonderful. Good. Martha, when do you think we could have our decision kind of compiled and get Bill back in here?
And I think we can try for September 2nd.
Okay, it would be two, is that two weeks from today?
Yes.
Yep. Bill, does that work for you?
Yes, it does.
Okay, great.
I'll get a hold of Bill R tomorrow morning and ask.
That's a good idea. Bill R versus Bill F. That's, that's a good idea, or DF. Martha, would two weeks, will a week be enough to kind of get a draft out to us, you think?
Sure hope so.
All right, I understand that your plate is very full, especially with all the different activities we have going on with projects and permits and applicants. So Bill, we're going to do our best to get that decision written up so that we can circulate to the board and have that ready for you. Okay. So with that said, I would welcome the opportunity to have a continuation to the 2nd of September for this.
Ask a question?
Public hearing? Yes, Chris, hi, how are you?
Hi, good.
I just saw your hand up.
My hand's up.
Very good. What can we do for you, sir?
Can we go through the waivers tonight or should wait on that next meeting?
Actually, that would be a good thing to go through because that's something that would be considered in, in the decision potentially.
Perfect. Do you want to pop up your screen with waivers, Chris? If we can read them.
Yep, let me do that on my other computer here. Hold on.
I have to make you a co-host first. Okay, we should be good to go.
Thank you very much, Martha.
How's that? Good. Let me zoom in one more time.
Beautiful. All right, old eyes love that. Thank you very much.
Yeah. All right, so the first waiver, section A4B8, requires that we show all trees over inches in caliper in the plans. We're asking waiver on that. In Google, in eight inches. There's a, is a good amount there and just seems unnecessary to grade everyone. So we just proposing the showing for void line instead. And then section A4B13 signage is already signed up front, so there's no need for any new signage or a waiver on that. Section A4B14 landscaping, same idea. You know, the front of that property is all nicely landscaped now, so no need for any new anything. Section A6, asking for over on impact assessment. Basically, the three, the three impact assessments that are listed in that section, and one is trick. This is, you know, this is a site that's going to have zero basic road traffic this site only basis. You know, five, 10 trips per maximum, so it's a negligible amount, negligible amount. You know, it's en route, and so there's no impacts to traffic flows or anything. The other, one of the other ones is impact to municipal. Let me see, like a financial section here.
Environmental and community impact.
So community, the impact assessment and just impact assessment. To consider the existing imposed demand from municipal services. You know, we're not tying into municipal service, we're tying, you know, we have welfare water, the septic sewer. So there's no, I don't think we need assessment on that. And then the B is the environment impact assessment that's about air and water quality, groundwater pollution, noise levels, you know, harmful emissions. There are not any storms being treated, discharge as well when there's no noise there, there's no whole emissions. There's no threat to an wind. Looks is on there.
The visual environment.
Visual environment. I guess that's the big topic of discussion going on, fixing the bell set. It would take care of any issues with the visual environment. Smothers, vibration, there's no, none of that electromagnetic radiation. I certainly hope there's not any of that out there. And then waste disposal, you know, this is already, it's taken care of already on site, dumpsters. So those are the three sections of impact assessment, so asking for over on that. And I think that was, yeah, that was the last one.
Okay.
I would suggest that the board vote on each of these waivers, whether to accept them or not.
Yes. So I'm going to kind of go down your wave request. The first waiver is for trees over eight inches in caliber. Is there any discussion on this, on this waiver? So let me just do a quick little roll call. Larry, any questions on that or any feelings on that?
No.
Okay, George?
No.
Leslie? Okay, Woody? No. Hey, then I would request a motion to accept this waiver request.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, any discussion? Okay, roll call, Larry?
All right.
George?
Yes.
Leslie?
Yes.
Woody?
Yes.
And the chair is in favor as well. Okay, that's our first waiver. The, the second waiver signage, is there any discussion with regards to this? Larry?
Yes.
No, no, we're not in the motion yet. Is there any question? I'm sorry. So we're on the second waiver, which is on signage. There is no new signage proposed. But we just need to run down through the waivers. Any concerns on this waiver?
No.
Okay, thank you, Larry. George?
No.
Okay, great. Leslie?
No.
Woody?
No.
Okay, then I entertain a motion to accept this waiver request.
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
Roll call? Okay, roll call, Larry?
Yes.
Thank you. George?
Yes.
Leslie?
Yes.
Woody?
Yes.
And the chair is in favor as well. With regards to the third waiver, the landscaping, there's no new landscaping proposed. Is there any concerns or questions with regards to this, Larry?
No.
Okay, George, any concerns or questions?
None.
Great, thank you. Leslie?
No.
Woody?
No.
Okay, seeing that I entertain a motion to approve this waiver request.
So moved.
Thank you. Is there a second? There's a second. Great, thank you, Woody. On the motion of Larry, how do you vote?
Yes.
Thank you, Larry. George?
Yes.
Leslie?
Yes.
Woody?
Yes.
And the chair is in favor as well. Last waiver regarding impact assessments, and there are some impact assessments that might be of concern or discussion that I might want to bring up, but I want to see if anyone else has any. Larry, do you have any concerns or questions? So Larry, can you hear us? I'm going to stop his video. Does he also have a phone there, Martha?
I don't know if he has one on him.
So if I stop his video or just stop his video and his audio will continue, right?
I guess, hopefully.
I might need to do that in the participants.
I'm actually not.
Okay. Did I kick him out?
Yeah, I think we, I think you kicked him out.
Oh, no.
I didn't remove him, though. I just wanted to stop his video. Oh, hold on, folks, I'm going to see if I can correct my, I was going to say, Larry, can you take over? Well, Larry can't take over. I just kicked him out. Hold on, Larry, please jump back.
If he was frozen, he might have gotten kicked out by the system.
Thank you for that, that, that little relief of weight, Martha. I appreciate that. So I don't have to feel guilty. Okay. George, you have any concerns on the listed waivers?
No.
The impact assessment, okay. Leslie?
No.
Okay, Woody?
No.
Okay. Chris, I'll just tell you, you know, the light scatter thing does, does concern me. You know, Woody brought it up and it's true, you know, nighttime when it's rainy, snowy, foggy. I don't know what we can do about that. I just want to articulate it there now. And hopefully with turning down our intensity of lights, maybe it won't make the situation more noticeable. All right.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, Leslie.
At this point, are we not? Let's see. Are we still considering the turning down of the lights?
The, for phase, is this three or four?
For, to turn from five to four.
Yeah, that was already agreed upon.
Yeah, okay, so we.
It's done.
So.
Yeah, Bill has agreed to that.
When we, if, when and if we go out for a night sidewalk, will we be seeing it at a 4K instead of 5K?
So the, the reason for that, that little visitation will be with, probably within the next week or so. In what Bill F is going to will, what Bill D is directing Bill R, the electrician, to put some shields up to see if we can kind of diminish some of that glare from phase one, phase one project. This is the phase three. Is this three or four, Martha?
It's three, actually.
Okay, this is a phase three project and that was phase one. So Bill's agreed to kind of do some mitigation from the phase one. So that's, they're kind of apples and oranges.
Right, but he's not, I don't think there's anything on the table for him to cut the existing building mounted lights from five down to four. This will be for the new lights.
Right.
So the existing lights that are, have already shown like nightlight disturbance will still remain in effect?
The ones that are, I think where we've left it is that the ones that are on the building will, will remain as they are. What will be tweaked will be the pole lights to turn, to adjust the heads and also shield them.
I just asking so that everybody can understand.
Yep, no, that's good.
Yep, thank you for the clarification, both Leslie and Martha. Very good. Okay, on the last waiver, do I have a motion to, for accepting that waiver request?
So moved.
Thank you, George. Is there a second?
Second.
Great, I'll do a roll call. Larry, how say you?
Yes.
Thank you, Larry, and welcome back. I think I might have done something. I apologize. George, how say you?
Yes.
Leslie, how say you?
Yes.
Woody?
Yes.
Wonderful, and the chair's in favor as well. Very good. So that addresses the waivers. Is that correct, Martha?
It does.
Okay.
A hair, but.
No. So I will include that in the, in the, in the decision that the waivers were accepted. And I think, I think the reasons for accepting it were pretty clear, so.
Okay, very good, very good. Chris, you can probably free us up from the screen share.
Okay.
And I did see previously a hand raised. I don't know if it's still raised.
Okay, let's see.
Michelle raised her hand.
Michelle, would you like to ask us a question?
Actually, I, I had a statement I wanted to say about those lights, but since you waved it, yeah, it doesn't.
Okay, I'm, I'm, I'm sorry, Michelle.
That's okay.
My apologies.
That's okay.
Would you still like to make your statement just so the board could hear it?
Yeah, I was just going to say that, that the area surrounding that property has a lot of vernal pools. There are a lot of vernal pools in those woods there. And light pollution has a big impact on the animals in those pools. So I would hope that the planning board would take that into account with any kind of waivers or anything having to do with large caliber light poles and things like that. And if it was possible for the, for the home, the property owner to use motion sensing lights rather than tall pole lights that are on all night long, they, they absolutely have an environmental impact. You know, environmental impact includes light pollution as well as any kind of chemical pollution or anything like that. That was all I was going to say.
Thank you very much, Michelle, for your comments. The board is sensitive to it and we're kind of looking towards maybe doing things down the future with regards to something that might help our community for that. So, you know, I would say stay in touch with Martha for future discussions on that and involvement, because that's what it's all about. You know, things change with local people, just get involved.
That's why I'm here.
Okay, beautiful. We're glad you're here. Thanks so much. Um, do you see anything else, Martha?
I do not.
Before I bundle anymore. Okay. So Bill, I think we're, we're just about there, which is great. So at this time, I would entertain a motion to continue this public hearing to the 2nd of September.
At 7:15.
At 7:15, thank you.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second, is there any discussion? Okay, seen a discussion. Larry, how say you in the motion?
Yes.
Thank you, George. How say you?
Yes.
Thank you, George. Leslie?
Yes.
Woody?
Yes.
And the chair is in support as well. Beautiful. Thank you so, so much, Bill, for your patience and your understanding and, and working with us as we get through all these different obstacles of COVID and all that up. Your patience has been appreciated.
Thank you, and I will be in touch after I talk to Bill R.
Great, very good. Thank you so much. All right, continuing, we're actually on time.
Raised hand, but I don't know if it's regarding this or something else.
Tricia? Tricia, would you like to identify yourself? And is this regarding what we've just discussed or is it regarding something coming down the pike?
Can you hear me?
Yes, 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 yes.
Sorry, sorry. I just wanted to, second, sorry, I couldn't find my raised hand as you guys, before you motioned. I just wanted a second to what Michelle was saying. I don't know if it's about the, with the vernal pools and that might be something to run by or just connect with the conservation committee about, because they would probably have further insight about that.
Well, Tricia, I'm going to ask you to tag team with Michelle and to link up with. Well, Tricia, I'm gonna ask you to, to tag team with Michelle and to link up with Martha, because I think this is the discussion that we'd like to probably explore as a board to see what steps we can go, going forward, just to make sure that we're doing the proper things for our environment.
Great.
Beautiful, and I apologize that we couldn't get the technology to work correctly.
Oh, no, it's okay, I just had to.
All right. Welcome to the world of Zoom, right? Very good, okay, thank you. Okay, very good, we're continuing on our public hearings. 108 Main Street map, U-11 lot 1A off Main Street map, R-41 lot six, owner applicant, Triple Q, John Colletino, Vice President, continued from August 5th of 2020. This is a definitive subdivision plan application for Collins Crossing of 108 Main Street and a common driveway special permit application for common driveway serving two lots that propose Collins Crossing of 108 Main Streets. Okay, John, I see you there, hello again.
Good evening, how are you?
Very good, how are you?
Good, thanks for having us again. I'm gonna go share screen if that's all right.
Martha, do we have the capacity?
I will make you a co-host if you can just bear with me for a second. Okay, you should be all set now.
Do you have that, John?
Is that good size for everyone?
We don't see it yet.
We're not seeing anything.
Ah.
Did you choose the share screen function?
They don't, they don't see this.
So once you, I think what you click on that, is there another icon on the top you have to click on, Martha?
Yeah. Unless I clicked it to that. So we got it, it's, well.
Yeah, I mean, try. Depends on how he's got it set up.
Okay, perfect, now click on this one. Double click. Okay.
Things are happening, John, good.
Oh, there we go.
You see it?
Yes, we do.
Is that big enough?
Yes, it is, thank you.
Okay. So John Colletino has the app, we have to Triple Q, thanks for having us again. Five House subdivision, 108 Main Street to the landoff 108. I just wanted to sort of jump in. Our last meeting that we had with you, some great ideas came out of that meeting, especially towards, towards the end. So we're looking at is the sky view of a rendering without the idea that came up. The idea that came up at the end of that meeting was doing away with the sidewalk altogether, because as we discussed, the sidewalk was really going to nowhere, and where it's only a five-house subdivision. In doing that, moving the road to the right, which would give it a bigger buffer on the wetland side of at least 10 feet plus, which was something that the Conservation Commission had talked about as, as well. Like to do is just sort of read down my notes on some of the things of moving the road to the right, doing away with the sidewalk. And then the key of the whole thing is, the whole subdivision would be in HOA, a homeowners association. So DBW Highway would not have to take care of anything, it'd be taken care of the five houses with them paying for it with the homeowners association. So the right of way from Station 0+00 to Station 3+20 was reduced from 53 feet to 40 feet in width. Remaining right way remains 53 wide. The proposed sidewalk would be eliminated. The paved roadway was shifted to the right to create a natural vegetated buffer on the left edge of the roadway drainage swale and vegetated wetland. This natural vegetated buffer is hatched green on the hatch screen, so when I show you that, the C1, you'll see that. And that's something that was submitted to you last week. In addition, the buffer zone will be enhanced with sweet pepper bush planting. The revised plan reduces the wetland filling 172 square feet. The roadway width of pavement, 22 feet, paved cul-de-sac radius, 50 feet, remains unchanged. The entire subdivision will be a homeowners association, as I already discussed. That would include taking care of the maintenance of the roadway, all drainage structures. The length of the roadway was also reduced 25 feet, so now we're gonna be under feet. That was another thing, you know, that was discussed with a little bit of concern. The revised plan will result in reduction in peris surface pavement. Apes not change in terms of total volume or stormwater treatment even with the reduced pavement area. So in other words, it was overdesigned to begin with, with this road structure, now it's even more overdesigned with what we'd be doing with the road, which is, you know, always better safe than sorry. So let me see if I can. Did everyone see that?
Yes.
Okay, big enough for you?
Yes, yes, that's great.
Okay, so this is moving the road over to the right. Giving us bigger buffer here. This is the green area that I was just talking about. Where I was saying the paved roadway was shifted to the right to create a natural vegetated buffer from the left side of the roadway drainage swale and vegetated wetland. This natural vegetated buffer attached green on the attached plan, which is this. So it does not affect any of the driveways except this one, which would make that driveway over 250 feet. So whenever you have the driveway over 250 feet, as we discussed at the last meeting, we have to have a turnaround fire truck, which we have put in, and I'll show you in a second, which was also submitted last week. The turning radius, fire truck there, there, and there, even with the roadway being moved to the right. So in a nutshell, that is it with, with the changes. It's, it's, it's a big change, but kind of a simple one, which I, I think just makes it much, much better with the concerns that the board had. So I'm just gonna click over to the fire truck for a second. So this is just, is that big enough for everyone?
Yes.
Yes.
So this is just the, the cat file showing that the fire truck can turn here easily as before could turn here easily. And the only thing that was added is where this is a little over 250 feet now, it has to have the capability to turn here. So that's, that's what was added. And I threw the chair, any questions or comments? And hoping that we're moving in the direction that, you know, the suggestions that came from the last meeting.
So, John, this is going for Conservation next week, right?
On Monday night, they have a meeting just for us, correct?
And moving this road, did that help with the wetland buffer, because I can't, I'm sorry, I, I want to go and make this larger, but if I do.
But. So it creates, if you remember at the last Conservation meeting, they were talking about they'd like, you know, a bigger buffer on this side if possible. And now by doing that, it gives that bigger buffer and 10 feet additional was thrown out there by someone on the Conservation Board, and we've been able to successfully do that by doing away with the sidewalk.
Okay, great, you've answered, you've answered that, that question. Okay, let me open it up to, first to Martha, to, we can probably stop the screen sharing for now. Thank you very much, John.
Thank you.
So Martha, I'm gonna have you kick off first.
Right, so I did, I did have a discussion with the Fire Chief and the Lieutenant today to review the revised plan and the turning radius plan that was provided to us. And a couple of things came out of that. One, I think that there may have been possibly a little confusion at some point regarding the radius of the cul-de-sac. Coming out of my discussion with them today, and I did get a letter at the very end of the day, their requirement is a cul-de-sac turnaround diameter of 120 feet, which be a 60-foot radius instead of the 50-foot that you're showing. And I know 50 feet was on the previous plans as well. But I think they had, there was an earlier letter that was written, I didn't have a chance to look that up, that said that it needed to be 120 feet, so they're looking for a 60-foot radius in the turnaround. And they're basing all of this on a, on the ladder truck, which is, it's 43 and a half feet, but with everything sticking out, they, they rounded up to 45. The other things that they had concern about was in, I think it's lot three, the T that was added there, the radius shows, shows the truck actually overhanging that. And they said in a, in a winter situation where snow is piled up and everything, that's not gonna work for them, so they're looking for for something that, that the fire truck will be on completely. So the T would be 45 feet long and 13 feet wide, and it looks like you might need a, a sort of a gentler radius there so that it doesn't go off the driveway at all, they're concerned about getting stuck. And similarly with the Y, it looks like the Y needs to be enlarged slightly so that there's no overhang or that the truck's not going off.
And you got this correspondence this afternoon?
And I got the letter at the end of the day, so I will forward that on to you.
Okay, okay, all right. I think that's why, so this is always, yeah, John, I think that's why it's always helpful to have the communications go through Martha, so Martha can have the point discussions with the chief, it doesn't allow for any miscommunication. So it's, it's, it's very important to clarify, so that's, that's.
Yeah, we, we we haven't had any discussions with the chief since the last meeting. We sent this to Martha last week and she sees like we always do, so everyone receives it, and we've just been waiting to, to hear back. The unfortunate thing with this, which I, I have to say I'm disappointed on is the 50 feet, 50-foot radius of the cul-de-sac has been since day one, when we met with the Fire Chief way back, and also presenting to your boys every single meeting. And what we were told to do was to make sure there was nothing in the center of the cul-de-sac for that turnaround radius, and we did use the largest truck that Newbury had, Newbury has for that to be done. So to find out, you know, four meetings into it, that it's supposed to be 60 feet, that, that's not really fair to us. You know, changing the, the turnaround on that driveway, I, I noticed as well, that's, that's no problem at all, that's a, you know, that's a minor change. It's the concept that we're more concerned about from the planning board on the, on the whole thing. But you know, the 60-foot radius on the, on the cul-de-sac, that, that's, that's not an easy change. And, and you know, we were very specific about that.
John, I, I can understand, I can, I can understand where you're coming, truly can. But what happened was, there was confirmation from the Fire Chief that Martha received today, so she's communicating that to you. And all that we can do is go by what our departments suggest, you know, what their recommendations are to the board. And that's why we have different departments doing different things. So it's, you know, I, again, I understand that, you know, there was a, an understanding that 50 foot was acceptable, but we have received clarification from the Fire Chief. The Fire Chief is the Fire Chief, and their, their requirements are their requirements, and so let's just try to see how we can get through this to get there. That's, I guess that's the best, best thing I could say at this point. Just hold that thought, as you're holding that thought and processing, I'm just gonna see if any board members have any questions. Larry, do you have any questions at this time?
No.
George, do you have any questions at this time?
I don't, just a comment. Wrong end of the phone. I was looking at the plan and the house at the bottom that I was looking at, the new turning radius, or the radius of the cul-de-sac was halfway up the driveway, it looked like. And going at another five feet or so, it's gonna even make that worse. So I was wondering what Chris has to say about that. It will be convenient.
Do you mind if I bring that back up so we can take a look at it?
Sure, pop it up. And this would be the plan that's gonna be, going to Concom on Monday. We're talking about the same plan.
The emergency vehicle.
So is, is this, is this the view that you're talking about?
Yeah, I'm looking, the second from the left, it looks like that driveway is getting chewed up a little bit by the move to the right. And if you had the larger, larger cul-de-sac, then they'll be further up on the driveway.
I apologize, it was all muffled, I couldn't hear what you said.
George, can you repeat that?
Yeah, I can, just looking at the house at the bottom of the plan, that's the second one from the left, with the cul-de-sac moved to the right, that's been encroaching on the original driveway, I think, and now you're gonna have a further encroachment. I don't know whether that's convenient for you to do or for the homeowner.
Yeah, I, I apologize, I, I, Bill is standing beside me too, Bill Manuel. We don't really understand what you mean, you're talking about that, the, the fire truck turning here?
Yeah.
And the fire truck turning here is completely within the cul-de-sac by what we're showing.
Okay, all right, now I understand it.
I apologize if I confused anyone on that. This is what we're talking about here, that I noticed as well, this, this needs to be corrected. And so that, that won't be a problem directing that. And what you guys are talking about is making the cul-de-sac 60 feet round instead of 50. And I, I don't have any answer to that, well, you know, we have to sort of go back to the drawing board and work on that a little bit.
Thank you for screen sharing, John.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Thank you very much. George, is that all that you had for a question or comment?
Yes.
Okay, thank you, sir, thank you very much. Leslie, do you have any questions or comments?
Not at this time, I, the, I it's, you know, my inexperience, but I fail to see how the turnaround for the shared driveway is going to work in the event of two vehicles trying to get up and down. That, that's my only concern.
You're talking about vehicles getting stacked up if there's something going on up there?
Yeah, so how does one back out? I, I'm just like a little I'm trying to, I'm, I'm trying to visualize that, and I, I just can't see it at this point in time, but you know, only, for me, only if the driveway were, were to be a little bit more on the wider side that you know, if there was a stack, it could, it could move a little bit more freely.
The, the Fire Chief wanted us to have that common drive at 20 feet, and, and we do have it at 20 feet, so it is much wider than the. feet. So it is much wider than the, you know, the normal driveway. So the common driveway part is, you know, 20 feet.
So Leslie, am I thinking, what you're thinking is, when it splits and goes up to each individual house?
Yeah.
Yeah. So Martha, correct me if I'm, if I'm wrong, our, our concern would be the common driveway itself, or would it be the individual driveways as well?
Fire was comfortable with the way it's shown. The only thing, under, under the regulations, there need to be either a T or a Y turnaround every so many feet, and that's been provided. Their only concern was the fact that the truck slightly over, overhangs when, when they're turning. Just the pavement needs to be a little bit bigger at the Y.
It wouldn't get during the, the winter months with the decrease of the width of road, all the emergency vehicles would be able to, you know, work in that area.
Right. I mean, that's why they, that's why they were concerned about overhang. They want to keep, keep everything on the pavement so that if you do have snowbanks or something like that, they're, you know, the, the fire truck isn't actually backing into the snowbank, that there'd be a clear plowed area. But they were, they were comfortable with that. All they were looking for is a slightly larger, larger dimension for the Y.
Well, I guess my next question would be is, if it's not a town-maintained facility or road, you have to rely upon the HOA to be on top of it at all times. So is, is that, sometimes, does that fall into like a, you know, a negative type of thing, or is it more of a positive type of thing?
I mean, I think in this case, that would be addressed in the homeowners association agreement in terms of what their responsibilities are, especially for maintaining things clear for public safety and access.
Okay. And how many, how many hydrants were planned for down in the, the subdivision?
There's, there's three. One in the cul-de-sac, one halfway, and then one even at the beginning of the street, which really doesn't help the subdivision, but the fire department had it.
Yeah. Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Leslie.
And I just have a question, because I need a little clarification through the chair. So I understand that we're looking at a 60-foot wide radius instead of 50 on the cul-de-sac. That seems to be a, a new thing tonight. On the turnaround, on the driveway, that now would be 250 feet, we got to fix that turnaround, which, which is easily done. And are we also saying that the fire chief is now asking for a different dimension of the Y off the common drive?
I haven't seen the, Martha, do you want to?
Yeah, if you look at the diagram, it appears that, that the truck is overhanging. So they just want to make sure that there is no overhang, that, that all the truck movements will be on pavement. It doesn't look like it's much of a change. But if, if, if you or Thad can take another, another look at that.
Yeah, that, that's not a problem, if that, if that's a concern. Our driv, our driveways, I think all of them, maybe only one isn't, but I think all of them are 14 feet, when the fire department was only requiring 12. But we made them all 14. And then, of course, the common driveway, they wanted 20, which we, we did. So, so not a problem.
Woody, do you have any questions, comments, or concerns?
No, I don't have any questions at this time.
Great, great. Let's see, I don't think I have anything, you know, as we indicated, a clarification today from the fire chief. And so hopefully we can make this, make this all fit and make this work with this new information. And I think you're getting close, John. I think you're getting real close. You know, we made a lot of progress last meeting. I think, you know, if we could just give the fire chief what he wants. And, you know, Martha, do you have any supplemental thoughts? As to where we're at right now?
Not regarding that. I mean, we will need to get documentation of homeowners agreement and that kind of stuff for review.
Through the chair, but that would be, that would be a condition on, on the approval, which we would have no issue with.
I'm going to defer to either Larry or George. Is that a condition, or is that a requirement for approval? Larry, I think that you commented that it was a requirement. Is that right? Hope he might be frozen. George, do you want to chime in on that one?
I believe that's, I believe that's a condition. That they have to be in place, and we have to have reviewed them.
So we have to review them?
Well, it's mandatory in a sense, yeah.
Right, okay, okay.
So, excuse me if I, again, so an HOA were part of the conditions, that they would have to supply the town with how they're going to run the HOA, and, or we give them guidelines on how to keep up the road and, and things of that matter. Not. You know, in an HOA, in a condominium atmosphere, it's all regulated because they're all connected to one another. But where these are separate, separate from one another, does it work in a different manner, or in the same manner as a regular condominium HOA?
So if I may?
Sure, go ahead.
The homeowners association, no matter if the houses are connected, as everyone thinks condos are always connected, but there's many, many homeowners associations where it's like single family homes, but they're technically condos. So it's run similar. Most places, when we do this, there would be a condition of the approval. So at least we know we have a subdivision before we're putting out HOA documents together for that specific subdivision. So it'd be a condition, we're not going to get any occupancy permits to be able to sell the, the homes and the individual condos until the town or the planning board reviews what we submit on the HOA documents, on, on the maintenance plan, the, the dues, you know, how it's run. So that'd be a condition that you guys would have to, you know, look at that and be comfortable with it.
Right, okay. Good, good, good. Alright, with that being said, I don't see any questions from any butters or any concerned individuals. I'm going to give it time, because I want to make sure the technology catches up, and that I don't cut anything short here. Okay. We have a little bit more work to do with this, it sounds like, Martha, with regards to, you know, coming back with cul-de-sac and then going through CONCOM and.
Right, so CON, so CONCOM is, is Monday, so there may be something that comes out of that as well.
Yep. So, go ahead, go ahead, Woody.
Was, were there any other issues with CONCOM other than the buffer zone on one side of the road there where they've eliminated sidewalk?
There were a couple of things, and I think John's probably going to go through that bullet list on Monday. Because there's basically a separate meeting. There was a first separate meeting for CONCOM just on this project, and there's going to be another separate meeting on CONCOM just for this project again. So I think there's a number of things that CONCOM has to work through. And I would say we'll let them do, do their thing, and then we can see where they, where they end up. And we'll continue to do what we do, and we'll see where we end up. And I think John can get to where he needs to get to. I think he's getting closer and closer. So that's good.
No, so there's no big issue. So, okay.
Okay. So I think I'd like to continue this, Martha.
Okay.
For a potential date, so we'll have a couple of weeks, CONCOM, and then I don't know if there's going to be any tweaking there. So from our perspective, John, from our perspective, we have the concern of the driveway, of the cul-de-section route, right? We've moved the road over, but we don't have a diagrammatic of the road shifted without the, without the sidewalk. Or did that third image that you showed us, was that with it moved without the sidewalk?
Correct, yeah.
Okay, okay, good. I just couldn't see it. Is there anything else that we're going to need, Martha?
Well, I'm assuming that, that John probably wants to get, get the sign off on, on the new layout. Obviously, the new, the subdivision drawings themselves, a full set, will need to be updated, I'm assuming. I, or at least I got the impression from Thad that that would be done. Is that, John, is that correct?
Yes, we, we wanted to, you know, we did a lot of work to get it to this point. We, we wanted to make sure that the discussion at the last meeting, what we're showing you tonight, is at least moving in the right direction before we make that major, you know, like sort of final changes on, on showing all the, the little details. It, it seems by, I hope I'm reading the board correctly, with those changes from the fire department, if we can tweak that in, that we're, we're in the right direction.
You're, you're going in the right direction. Absolutely, John.
And I do have one question. So I just want to confirm that, that in terms of stormwater management, there are no changes to that from what you showed previously?
No, absolutely no changes whatsoever. And that's why I was saying it's actually, you know, better. It'd be overdesigned. So it's, it's good. We don't, don't have to worry anything about that. And remember, we're, we're, we're going to be having, you know, some less pavement. So it's a plus-plus all around, I think.
Okay, so I would say, continue down the path, John, see what you need to do with CONCOM, see how you can merge these, the, the two discussions, get the, the revised plans to Martha, and let's pick a continuation date. It sounded like a good plan?
Sounds good, thank you.
Okay, beautiful. Martha, timetable, what do you think?
Well, I'm just writing down what we've got going now on September 2nd. So we've got the gas station, public hearing is opening that night. We've got 105 High Road continued, we've got 68 Green Street continued, we've got Newbury South Storage continued, although that may be largely just a matter of reviewing the decision and taking a vote on that. We also have a discussion about the preliminary plan for 217 to 21 High Road.
So that's already two, two, two hours, maybe two and a half hours worth of, of meeting right there. In the 16th?
The 16th? No, we don't have 105 that night. We've got, that's on the 16th, that's a month. So I'm sorry, I was, so it's just the gas station, 68 Green Street, and Newbury South Storage, and then 105 High Road is on the 16th.
Think we can do it on the 2nd?
Yeah, John, do you think you'd be ready?
We should be ready for the 2nd, yeah.
The wild card is going to be prime, and how long that's going to be? That'll be 20 minutes to a half an hour. Newbury South Storage should be quick, there should be 15 minutes. So let's, let's put it in for the 2nd.
Thank you.
Is the board comfortable with that?
I think that's, it's, it'll come fresh off of CONCOM too, so.
That being the case, I would entertain a motion.
I'm hoping to continue on September 2nd.
Is there a 2nd?
At 7:15, yeah.
At 7:15.
Is there a 2nd?
Second, second.
Great. Any discussion on the motion? Okay, Larry, roll call. How, how would you say on this? Larry? Yes, okay. George?
Yes.
Thank you, sir. Leslie?
Yes.
Now, Woody?
Yes.
Chair is also in favor. Thank you very much. Thank you, John. Appreciate your continued cooperation in this process.
Thanks, John.
Okay, very good. Okay, so let's continue on to our agenda. Okay, Larry's going to have to be signing, signing off his video. His wifi has crashed where he's at, so he's going to have to jump off. Old business, I don't see any old business, new business, I don't see any new business. So let's see town finish report. Is there anything supplemental?
We had that. So I think it's really just the liaison reports, which had at the beginning of the agenda, but we'll put it at the end.
Okay, Board of Selectmen?
Um, there hasn't been another meeting since the last time I reported on.
Okay. ZBA, I think Larry just left us. Conservation.
Can you hear me?
Oh, we can, Larry. There you go.
Yeah, I, I've lost the video, but I do have audio back now. And so I'm sorry, I lost, lost credit where we're at.
Okay, so we're, yeah, we're into liaison reports, and I didn't know if you had anything from ZBA.
No, I'm holding the, the 40B right now. Oh, they, property off Pearson Drive.
Okay. And that's all that's going on there. Okay, alright. Conservation, we had another FORO meeting last night. Were there any issues that were relative to, we have 105 that'll be coming on Monday as a separate meeting. And, yeah, I didn't see you last, like, Leslie.
No, you know, sometimes it's like when I work on Tuesdays, and by the time I get home.
It's, it's all good. I am trying to, the unfortunate thing about doing Zoom meetings is our agendas aren't printed. And if our agenda's unprinted, the note-taking is very different for me, because then it tends to scribble on pieces of paper. You know, most of the things were relative to some beach stuff, but I think there was a discussion regarding, very interesting discussion, which was a long discussion, regarding the maintenance and the herbicide application along the train tracks, which was really, really interesting. But it seems, I don't know how it truly works in a area that has tidal, tidal waters, and how they can actually project when they're going to spray based on the tides, because they don't. They just base them upon markers, and they're supposed to meet environmental, environmental maintenance person involved. But they, they do it, and they've been doing it, and they're continuing to do it. So that was a long and lively discussion, and that's not, no.
Mostly from mosquito control?
I know, this was for vegetation.
Oh, vegetation, okay.
Right. So that's that. And I think CONCOM is going to get going to twice a month meetings now. At least, that's the direction I think that we're going to be headed in.
Is that a permanent change, or just until things?
It was a suggestion. It was between twice a month and once every 21 days. So I think it's going to be discussed. It'll work.
More manageable.
More manageable. That's all I have. MVPC?
They're still on summer break as far as the commission is concerned. I do have a report from July. They send out a report every month, basically, on what they've been doing. So I'll just forward that to the board for information.
Okay, wonderful, wonderful. I don't think we have any minutes. Is there anything else we need to talk about tonight, Martha? Or any other board members?
None for me.
I don't think so.
Okay, George?
What are we doing, John?
Oh, I love it, George. There's a motion. Is there a 2nd?
Yes, 2nd.
Alright, is there any discussion of the motion? I don't see any. Wonderful. Roll call. I think Larry has left us technically. call. I think Larry has left us, technically failed us. George, how say you, sir?
Yes.
Thank you. Leslie?
Yes.
Woody?
Yes, and thank you, everyone.
Thank you, and cheers and favors as well. Yes, thank you, everyone. We appreciate continued support and patience through Zoom.
Yes.
All right. Thank you. Good night, everyone.
Night, everyone.
Good night.